Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Hamilton County Commission.
County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Thank you all, and I am Stephanie Summer Odumas, President of this Board. So we will move forward because we have some exciting things that are going to happen today. And we'll start as we always start with a silent prayer. And if we can afterwards stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would just ask that we have a silent prayer for Gabby Petito, who unfortunately lost her life at age 22 in the Wyoming Park area. So we pray for her and for her family. And then you also, of course, can pray for what you'd like. So if you could take a moment. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the last session.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you so much. So next, we have a presentation. And our presentation is a proclamation honoring the retirement of Jacqueline Panioto as the clerk of our board. And so we have a proclamation. Don't start, Jackie, I see those. And we're gonna read the proclamation and then I'm sure people will have things to say up here and maybe also in the audience. So we will start, and I'll start with a proclamation recognizing Jacqueline Panioto for her contributions to Hamilton County during 33.5 years of service. Wow. And whereas Jacqueline Panioto has retired from her distinguished career as clerk of the Board for Hamilton County Commissioners after dedicating 33.5 years to serving the public. And whereas Ms. Panioto has served under 20 commissioners, including Norm Murdock, Bob Taft, Joseph DeCoursey, Sandra Beckwith, Steve Shabbitt, John Dowlin, Guy Guckenberger, Bob Beddinghouse, Tom Nyer, Todd Purtoon, Phil Heimlich, Pat Dewine, David Pepper, Greg Hartman, Chris Munzell, Dennis Dieters, Denise Dreehouse, Stephanie Summer Odumas, Victoria Parks, and the newest county commissioner, Alicia Reese. And whereas Ms. Panioto served alongside 30 commission staff members and worked with six county administrators in her time as a keeper of the record and...
And whereas Ms. Panioto started her career in the role of Secretary One at the front desk for the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners on March 24, 1988, a time when smoking was allowed in the office. Uh-oh. Whereas soon after she joined the county, Ms. Panioto took over as the acting clerk of the Board when her boss suddenly took an extended leave of absence. She was officially appointed to the role of clerk of the Board on June 30, 1993. And whereas, as clerk for the past 30 years, Ms. Panioto always seemed to have the answer for her coworkers, reporters, and the public, so diligently served.
And whereas Ms. Panioto will be remembered for the generosity of her time, her vast knowledge of every facet of county operations, and the consummate professionalism in which she carried out her duties. And whereas, many will attempt, but very few will duplicate, the tireless dedication to the integrity of the record that Ms. Panioto has accomplished over her long and successful career. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners honors Jacqueline Panioto for her contributions to the citizens of Hamilton County and wish her well in her retirement.
Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the first day of October 2021 as Jacqueline Panioto Day, and all of Hamilton County, signed by all the Commissioners. Oh, we... So we have one other presentation. There's a gentleman in the audience. I won't say his name because you might know who he is. He's from the... He's the registrar from the BMB. Where are you? There you are. He has a presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and members of the Commission and Administration. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you today to wish a happy... Congratulations to our friend Jackie. My name's Charlie Norman. I'm the State Registrar of Motor Vehicles. And at one point in my life, one of my favorite jobs was actually working right here at the VOCC with Jackie. And Jackie was a good colleague and a better friend and really looked out for me and occasionally kept me in line as well. And I'm just really pleased to be able to see her achieve this professional milestone. And on a personal level, glad you're gonna be able to spend more time with your family. I know that's something that's so important to you, Jackie. So in honor of your many years of service, 33 and a half years of service to the people of Hamilton County, I would like to present you this small token of our gratitude. Jackie told me once, someday I might end up making license plates, but I don't think this is what she had.
And if you could just stay right there for a minute because we're all gonna come down and take a picture. And Commissioner Dreehouse, you had something.
So Jackie, we just wanted to give you a token of our gratitude along with the proclamation, so I'm gonna run it over to you.
And so I will open it up for anyone. Well, we'll see if anyone else has any comments. And then I'm sure, Jackie, you may want to say a few things. Anyone at this time that would like to come up and make any comments, you're welcome to do that. You might have said it earlier. We had a reception for Jackie out here in the lobby from 11:00 to 12:30. So anyone? Jeff, would... Sure.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Jack Renne Camp with Metropolitan Sewer District. And I want to congratulate Jackie, even though I don't have flowers or a proclamation, all of her hard work that she's done on behalf of the Board. And also, all of the many years, almost 20, that I've worked with her as MSD's Legislative Liaison. Also, my colleagues, who couldn't be here today, expressed their gratitude, their thanks, and their wish her well in her retirement. And finally, my predecessors, and there are only a few of them. I'm number four of the Legislative Liaison in 53 years, but they've also expressed their thanks since they have worked with her since 1993. Congratulations, Jackie. Thank you.
Our Administrator, Jeff Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so I did just wanna, as Mr. Renne Camp said, just congratulate Jackie on her retirement. It's been an absolute thrill and a privilege to have worked with Jackie. Over the years, I've known Jackie for, that's going on, I guess, 20 some odd years now since I arrived at the county. I learned very, very quickly that Jackie always had the answer to whatever question it was. Jackie was always there with the answer. She was always willing and looking to make things better in the organization. She was so committed to that. She was so committed to the integrity of the organization and making sure that everything that was done was moving the organization in the right direction. She was always willing to chip in and help regardless of what it was. You know, look no further than just this past year as we were in COVID and everything we were doing with the CARES Act and the ARPA. And Jackie stepped in numerous times to help with that, which was just hugely greatly appreciated. And more than anything else, I mean, I don't know that I'll remember anything more than just the times between formal events, right? Just the meetings, you know, just in Jackie's office, just the sense of humor that Jackie had, the laughs that we've had, the times going back into the past here now, Jackie, but the fun that we would have after pre-agenda meetings in the past, you know, all of those types of things that I'm gonna just miss incredibly. But I couldn't be happier for you, couldn't be happier for Ron. I know you guys have a lot of plans, a lot of things that you want to do. And I just wish you all the best and just thank you for the opportunity to have gotten to know you so well over the past two decades. It was a privilege working.
Very nice, yes. Okay, so Jack. Yeah, we have a... No, okay, all right. So Jackie, if you'd like to?
I have to say thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the words and your proclamation. For my tenure as clerk of the Board, I've had the honor to be asked to work with the Commissioners who went on to become governor. They have become a federal judge, a Supreme Court judge, congressmen, and many other prestigious and respected positions. Over the years, I've built wonderful working relationships with Commissioners' offices, the administrative staff, and elected officials in departments. I would like to take a moment to thank Jeff Aludo for the nice article in the Weekly Wrap-Up. I really appreciate that. Really a nice story. I'd like to thank Bridget Doherty for her work on the proclamation for the events of today and for the working relationship and friendship that we've enjoyed over the years. And Leslie Hurley for today. I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep going.
That's okay.
For today and all the days in the past, five years that we've worked together. Most of all, I'd like to thank my husband, Ron, and my fiancee for all their support and patience as I pursue life. I will forever cherish my many friendships and fond memories that I enjoy here as clerk of the Board. I could go on and on, but as people of the timer.
You're welcome. Absolutely. You can read that part about me that you skipped over. Thank you so much. I will open it up for my colleagues if they have something they'd like to add. Vice President Reese.
Well, they said I'm the newest member, but Jackie's my neighbor, so I can go right next door and get all the information I need. I'm gonna miss that. I feel a little cheated, Jackie, though. I just got here and, you know, I don't get all the time that you've given to all of these other commissioners that came before me. But the time that we did get to spend together, and I appreciate us being able to even talk about, you know, my mother and her passing and what that did, and talk to you about your dad. And I just appreciate you opening up with me, and that meant a lot to me. And I know Jack came up. He's retiring and you're retiring. I don't know. Don't make this a habit now. We gotta... I have to have a resolution to stop all this retirement. But just to know that you have served this county well. And now it's your time. And it's your time to focus on you and your family. And you've told me about these great plans of dropping the top and you and your husband going to the West Coast and everything. So when you're out riding with the sunshine beaming down on the both of you, just remember we're here going through legislation at 1 o'clock on Thursdays and Tuesdays. But again, thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you by the poolside soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you. So I go back a little bit further, obviously, with Jackie. And when I first came in, we were very excited to be here. And when I became President of the Commission, we wanted to change some things up. And Jackie is the keeper of all things and the organizer of all things and has a very serious approach to keeping things organized, which I have grown to respect and admire. So when I came in and wanting a bunch of changes, Jackie was not reticent so much as curious as to why I wanted to change it. And I said, "Well, maybe we could change the days of the meetings. Maybe we could change the meeting times." Maybe... And she was like, "Oh, my Lord." And I said, "Well, why?" You know, and so we came to well-understand one another and maybe a new approach that was tempered with some history and some context as to why we do what we do. And so one of my more favorite stories is about, you know, as the agendas come out, it is difficult to get the agendas out on time and completed. And so we used to have these deadlines of the Friday before the meeting on Tuesday. And we tried to abide by that deadline, but we didn't always quite make the mark. And so whenever we had an addition, instead of me going down and talking to Jackie about the addition that we knew would be troublesome, I had Alex Lindsor, my Chief of Staff, do it. And I'd say, "Alex, so this new by leave..." And he's like, "Oh, no, are you gonna make me go talk to Jackie?" And I'm like, "Yes." And he would go down, and it would happen. It was like magic. It took place. But what I know about you, Jackie, is that you have so much respect for this institution and the processes, the guide us, that it's important that we then get that, right? And that we try to abide by the structures that you've got in place. And so even though we broke the rules a couple times, I really do appreciate that about you and also ultimately your sense of humor about us doing stuff like that. And I know that's continued. So we will miss you. We will miss you just walking through the hallways. I know you're gonna have fun in the sun with Ron, and I'm a little jealous of that, of course. But you have been such an asset to the citizens of this community. And so congratulations to you and happy retirement.
Thank you. And so Jackie, I would just say Jackie is a gem. Ever since I've come here, any question that I've had, which was mentioned earlier, I would go to her. And she said, "No problem, no problem," no matter how stupid the questions were. But you always said there is no stupid question. So for you taking time to listen to me and to get to the bottom of the items that I had to discuss. And so, and just a great person. I don't care what people say about you. You are a great person. Yeah, so... Yeah, so... But I'm not letting you go that easy. You'll be hearing more from me. So thank you so much for all you do and all that you will do, so... Great, great.
Just, I remember when I sent my letter saying I was gonna retire. I truly appreciated you calling to talk to me about, you know, what might be behind, why I want to go, and those kind of things. And I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. You can start writing a book or something. Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. We will move forward. And the next item on our agenda is Hamilton County's Official Observance of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2021. I want to thank everyone who has their purple on and thank those that don't, that are here, to hear about the presentation. And so it's just very important that we provide awareness as a county and in general as it relates to domestic violence. And so I wore the purple for domestic violence and I also wore the pink because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And how can we not remember to think about that and all the women and men that are going through that issue? So I wanted to make sure that I represented both entities and both occurrences. So... But before we get started, I'd like to give a little facts about domestic violence. And a lot of people have an idea of what it is. We have some guests that are gonna be here, and we're gonna give them some honorary pins. And... But domestic violence is about power and control. When you define it, it's violent or aggressive behavior within the home, typically involving the violent abuse of a spouse or a partner. And it had in the definition, police, social service, and voluntary agencies are working to tackle this problem. And it's just ironic because the people that I asked to come forward are police, sheriffs, and then social service. I asked Amy Story to come. And then we have Kristin Shimpli from Women Helping Women who will come up in a few minutes. So that's the definition. And it can be emotional, it can be physical. There are so financial abuse. And so a lot of people don't want to talk about it, but there are so many that are suffering with this. And I have a little... And I'm not gonna go through all of it, but COVID-19 impact as it relates to domestic violence. 23% increase in the hotline use since the COVID. 50% increase in court support services. 300% increases in domestic violence homicides, 300%. Black women experience domestic violence at a rate 35% higher than white women and 2.5 times the rate of other races and are three times as likely to experience death due to domestic violence. So those are statistics that are really shaking for us. I also invited Steve Bass, who's here, who works with young people, young males. And the reason why I brought him or asked him to come, and I appreciate him coming, is this is not just a woman thing. There are men that are being abused. I provided health and relationship training to a group. And one of the ladies said, "If I don't have a man that I can beat up, I don't want him." She came from abusive environment and wanted to be the one to beat up the man. So there are a lot of men, and I'm sure Kristin has some statistics on how many, I think it's one out of three women and maybe one out of four men. I'm pretty sure I'm right about that, that experienced domestic violence. So it's just not a female thing. And so when you raise up your sons to be nice gentlemen, there are women, some women, who are waiting for those nice gentlemen that they can take advantage of. So let us not forget about the men. So finally, before we get into the proclamation, I just have a poem I'd like to read to you. And this is something I believe that lots of women and men go through every day. He pulls my hair. He slaps my face. He kicks me on the floor. I love him so much, so I don't have the strength to walk out the door. There's blood on my face. Everything hurts, and all I can do is cry. I made him mad. This is what he does. I wish I knew his reason why. My heart won't let me leave him, and it's hard, hard too much to try. It hurts too much to try. I wonder if this is how my life will be from now until I die. So that's really... I mean, that's... A lot of women go... A lot of men go through that, and that's what they think. Can you imagine every day waking up and you're excited about coming to work or doing whatever you do when you retire? And some people every day wonder if this is gonna be their last day. So I just wanted to share that with you. And we will move forward with the proclamation. Proclamation recognized in October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the proclamation acknowledges that the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas in 1981, the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence began National Domestic Violence Awareness Month as a day of unity to connect battered women's advocates across the country. And whereas domestic violence affects millions, both women and men of every race, religion, culture, and status.
Whereas much progress has been made since the Violence Against Women Act passed in 1994, this landmark legislation led by then-Senator Joe Biden combined new provisions that hold offenders accountable and provide programs and services for victims. And whereas Hamilton County has made and continues to make... And whereas Hamilton County has made and continues to make strategic investments and policy decisions to support the survivors as they overcome physical and emotional abuse, including amending the family leave policy to provide additional leave for victims of domestic abuse and providing funding to nonprofits that serve domestic violence.
And whereas the Hamilton County Sheriffs will wear purple ribbons commemorating Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas during the month of October, the Cincinnati Bengals, the Cincinnati Reds, and FC Cincinnati will shine the light on domestic violence by lighting up Paul Brown Stadium, Great American Ballpark, and TQL Stadium fins purple as the color of domestic violence awareness.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognize October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in all of Hamilton County, Ohio. And I just want to thank those entities that have agreed to, like, as we said earlier, the Reds, the Bengals, TQL, we're looking at, I won't name them until we're confirmed on the others, but lots of buildings downtown for, and we're looking at the weekend of the 8th, 9th, and 10th. So as you drive through downtown, if you happen to be down here, just take a look at the buildings. And so they have agreed with not any hesitation to do this. So at this time, we're going to have commissioners make any comments and then we'll have our guests come up. So Vice President Reese, did you have any comments? Yeah, once they come up and speak, yeah.
Okay, I'll wait till that.
Okay, okay. And we also have the purple pins on. We have extras if anybody wants any. And so Commissioner Reese was saying, when we come up and give the pins, then she'll have some comments. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, so thank you for bringing this forward. You know, this is something that I think we as a county take very seriously related to victims of domestic violence. And we have done some work in this area in the last few years. And I just do want to highlight it because some of our partners are in the room. We have the divert program in certain areas of the county where a first responder goes out on an emergency run, but a divert specialist, someone that is trained to help victims of domestic violence and their families, is also available to go out on those runs, if appropriate, and make sure that the women and their families stay safe. And that is a fairly new thing. I think we funded it last year. We've continued to fund it. All three of us have supported it. It was a recommendation that came from the Commission on Women and Girls. And so it's a really important step, I think, to try to make sure people know that we're serious about the issue, but also to save the lives and protect the families in Hamilton County. So Women Helping Women is our partner in that. The city has the same partnership with them. And I know we're saving lives. And I just want to thank Kristin Shimpling, who is here with Women Helping Women for being such a diligent and determined partner to make sure that not only are we doing it in the communities where we are now, but we look to expand the program so that every community in Hamilton County will benefit from this program. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I don't know what it was called in the 80s, but there was a program similar to this. And we weren't putting money toward it because they came out for me. And so I neglected to say that I am a survivor of domestic violence and an advocate. And I train about and teach about it. So I wanted to make sure that people knew that. And that, and I've said it before, that Women Helping Women saved my life. And so I'll never forget that. But right now, we're going to have Shermaine, Sheriff Shermaine McGuffey come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I so appreciate it. And certainly President Dumas, this is a very important event for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. We, for the first time, will be wearing this purple ribbon. The purple ribbon will be worn on our uniform above our breast pocket. And every deputy that is wearing a Class A uniform will have this pin on. And I'd just like to say that the significance of the pin is so important to society because what it says when police officers wear this pin is we understand. We get it. We're there. You can talk to us. We will be empathetic. We will help you. We will help you through your difficulties. And that is something, quite frankly, that, you know, victims of domestic violence have not always felt from the police. And this is a new day. We are reaching out. Our brand in the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office's service. And it is our pleasure and our honor, quite frankly, to wear this purple ribbon. So thank you, President Dumas.
Thank you so much. And we're going to ask you to come up again in a few minutes, okay? And I just, as I was thinking about that, when I spoke to you about the possibility, there was no hesitation. I thought I would, I don't know, I thought I might have to convince you. That's why we want you. No, this is great. And so just thank you and your officers for that. And I want to kind of digress a little bit. I'm thinking about our administrator. And so when I came here two and a half years ago, we were working with Women Helping Women then. But we not only worked with them, as Commissioner Dreehouse was saying, we put our money where our mouth is. And we have continued to increase our funding for things like that. So it's just this whole board is backing that effort. So thank you so much. Yes, uh-huh. Yes, we have three. Yeah, okay. If you want to say, you want to say something? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to say something. The statement that was made by Sheriff McGuffey is a big one. I know when I first got here, first of all, I've been supportive of Women Helping Women since my days on city council, which is about 20 years ago. And certainly supportive at the state level and the state representative. But when I got here, we were talking about the divert program. And one of the issues was getting into some of these other communities. And many of these communities are contracted now with our sheriff's department. And so I immediately suggested to contact Sheriff McGuffey. I said, we've got a new way and she's going a new way. I mean, doing a new day and she's going a new way. And I'm just happy to see from just that couple of months, a month ago. And now we have our sheriff here saying, hey, we got the purple ribbon, but we're on board. We're going to be a partner. So I think that's incredible because there are a number of municipalities that now have our sheriff as the actual police department. So I want to thank them for that. I also want to mention two people, if you don't mind, that aren't here today. But I want to recognize their work. A young lady by the name of Chris Stiles. She and I started at WCIN Radio together. And over the years, you know, she's continued in her quest in the communication side of things. But on her own, with her own money, her own time, she created this Couch Series. She had me come to it. She has men and women who have been victims of domestic violence and even some who have participated as the person then maybe didn't realize what they were doing. And you had people coming apologizing to each other, crying, understanding better. And I just want to give a shout out to her because she does this on a volunteer basis. And this is like her ministry or mission. And I also want to, after seeing our meeting, Madam President, we brought Women Helping Women on for the divert program. Commissioner Dreehouse, I want to thank her as well. I was reached out by Carol Mitchell Lawrence. Now, she's not a victim of domestic violence, but she had family members who she had worked with, Women Helping Women. And she always gave, and she said, I just didn't really know exactly what they do. But because of your meeting, I was able to, and I want to do more. And she's with Macy's, by the way, and connected her and they're working together. So a lot of times our meetings, people watch them and then they're able to go maybe further than even us and start to connect. And that's what we want to accomplish as a board, to set the tone and the leadership, but then people can get together organically. So I do want to, I did want to just mention those two individuals because I think those are two positive things, that people who want to get involved. And I know there are others in the community that want to get involved and help. So thank you.
Thank you. And you bring up a good point because we hear about the big agencies, but there are a lot of smaller agencies, churches and everything that are doing great things. And Sheriff McGuffey, how many staff are we talking about? How many officers? Wow.
Thank you. We will have at minimum 500 officers wearing these pins, these ribbons. And again, you know, as each officer picks up their ribbon, it is, it's so important because it's the small things, right? That says to our officers, this is important. It's important to you. It's important to the boss. It's important to each and every county commissioner. And certainly, we will be, again, very honored to do that.
Thank you. That's a big deal, 500 officers. Thank you so much for your commitment. So we have Kristin Shimpling. Would you like to come, Women Helping Women?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Administration. Congratulations to the clerk on your retirement. What an amazing amount of time and a legacy to leave. And to be well-liked and well-respected by your colleagues is no small feat. Congratulations. Congratulations to you. I basically just first and foremost want to say thank you. I am incredibly proud for our agency to partner in Hamilton County with all the Commissioners and all of the administration and all of the staff who've been so critical and fundamentally understanding the perils of domestic violence, but not stopping the story there. Understanding the possibilities of what we can do through partnership, collaboration, and activation. And I also want to say specifically a huge thank you to the sheriff. It truly matters, you know, what a survivor may see with a pin. What they don't see are the behind closed-door meetings where you have a leader who has stepped forward and said, how can we all work together? How can we show up? They don't see the 24 months of meetings that have been happening behind closed doors and the new meetings with new leaders coming into this space as Commissioners. They don't see all of the statistics of what the massiveness that this looks like in our county. They know their experience. They know what they've gone through time and time again. And they now know, because you have all believed in partnership and you showed up for partnership, right? Words are one thing, and words are great. The actions are what matter. And that is what we have so seen in this county, which is remarkable. We are all battling a pandemic that continues to rage. And you illustrated the impact of that with statistics. It is impacting every resident in very unique ways, but specifically survivors. Because the whole nature, and you talked about power and control with domestic violence, is to control, to isolate, to separate from, to threaten, to cause harm. And then you have a pandemic that's doing exactly the same thing. So we are incredibly grateful for the leadership, true leadership, the financial support. Because we didn't come to you with a pipe dream. We came to you with a strategy. And I want to say thank you to our leadership with Amy Blazer, the Senior Director of Survivor Services, and to Wayne Williams, our Director for Divert. Because now when law enforcement, so we are in 15 jurisdictions now with your support and with the Sheriff's Department. So when law enforcement show up on scene after a 911 call for domestic violence, divert advocates show up on scene 24/7, 365 days a year. You opened up with a prayer for someone who's already lost their life in Wyoming. Law enforcement showed up. And what resulted in parts of trying to figure all of that out, two people were told to separate and kind of go sleep it off. And it was identified as a mental health issue. I feel so good about our county. Law enforcement shows up. They know what domestic violence looks like. They know how to look for the patterns. They know how to listen to what was in that 911 call, how to respond, how to assess the scene. And then they know how to dispatch us. And we show up on scene. And we are focused on that survivor. And quite often, they're kiddos. And this absolutely, you know, our agency is called Women Helping Women. It's an old name. When we get funding, we prefer to put it to our services and not the brand. We're mighty, but small. But we serve everyone. Men, women, gender non-conforming, the LGBTQ community. And I just want to close and say, because you also lifted it up in your statistics, certain identities do not bring on more domestic violence. It is the systems who are inequitably set up that do not respond. So that is also what Women Helping Women does in partnership with all of you. We create specific strategies to disrupt that cycle, specifically against black women. They are overrepresented in victimization because they haven't been getting connected to services through the systems. And this is where, in our county, collaboration is working. And I feel so much, you know, if we can tame the beast with the pandemic, I feel that 2022 is going to be such a brighter spot for this region. And I thank you for all of your discussions, your decisions, and most importantly, your actions.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And we're going to have divert come back sometime in October, this month, to talk about that specific program. So everybody who's listening can hear more about the program. You wanted to say something?
Madam President, I would be remiss if we also don't mention that we talk about collaboration. We also are focused on preventative. You know, I know we had talked about that on our last meeting, but I didn't want that to go away either. That we're working on preventative care and that pandemic is bringing on additional stress. Particularly when people had to stay together. Some people had never stayed together because everybody was on the run. And you have to now stay in a house or stay in, and everybody doesn't have great living conditions. So I just appreciate you bringing those things up in your presentation that we also have to be equally focused on preventative. But people just don't, I mean, they're saying they want to lose it all because they've lost that job. They can't find something else. They're getting ready to be evicted. Economic issues are two pressure points, and it just popped. So I'm glad that you brought that up. And I just didn't want that to go unnoticed that we, as a board, also are looking at what things we are investing in or can invest in so that people who normally don't have that type of behavior is just the pressures of the world and everything crumbling and feeling like it's nothing left. So I just wanted to bring that up, that you brought that up. And certainly, this board is equally concerned in looking at what we can continue to invest in. And I think, Madam President, you had brought up, you're real big on the wraparound, all of the services together, working together. So I do, I just wanted to say thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
I just want to give a shout out. So we're in 15 communities outside the city of Cincinnati in Hamilton County and looking to expand. The sheriff is a fantastic partner in some of those communities. We have other partners and other police departments throughout the county as well. And so I'm looking forward to that conversation related to that because these partnerships extend to the sheriff and many, many other law enforcement throughout the county. So I'm looking forward to digging into that and giving them some recognition when we have a more in-depth discussion about divert. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Amy Story, who is our interim director of JFS. I asked her to please come over and say a few words because she works with the family and children.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Speaking for JFS, we stand with our community partners in advocacy, treatment, law enforcement to protect children and families affected by domestic violence. Children who experience traumatic exposure to domestic violence suffer emotional, mental, and social damage that that often negatively impacts their developmental growth and jeopardizes child safety. Many years ago, we recognized the need to collaborate and to improve our collective response for families affected by domestic violence. Starting in 2012, we partnered with the YWCA to launch the Safe and Together Model. This intervention is a unique, evidence-based model designed for families involved with children's services. Case workers alongside DV intervention staff collaborate to safely keep their children with the non-offending parent while providing treatment to the entire family. And Hamilton County is seen as a model. The YWCA also provides domestic violence training to our new staff, and later, to all child welfare professionals on an annual basis. More recently, we've expanded our support partnering with Women Helping Women and to fund the expansion of the divert program. JFS would like to thank the OCC and our Hamilton County voters because levy dollars, along with state and federal funds, enable us to engage in this work, investing about $900,000 into these two critical programs.
Thank you so much. And I'm glad that you brought up about the YWCA because they do, thank you, Amy, they do such great work. And that's why we specifically in our proclamation didn't start listing people. We didn't want to leave anybody out. But we certainly will probably have YWCA come in sometime this month also and say a few things about what they do. So I don't see Steve. Did Steve have to leave? Okay, very good, okay. And as I mentioned, Steve Bass, he works with our young males and does a great job with them. He had to leave out. But as I said earlier, it was just to show that it's not just women, but it's also men, young men. And also to indicate teenagers are really there. And you know better than me, Kristin, their statistics on abuse, domestic violence is unbelievable. And it's starting at an early age. So we have to get in and intervene. And so I'm looking at this handsome sheriff back there. And I was just wondering what your name was, sir? Okay, nice to meet you and thank you for coming and thank you for your support. Yeah. Okay, so what we're going to do right now, we're almost done with this part, is the commissioners will go down and we'll ask Sheriff McGuffey to come back up, Kristin to come back up, and Amy to come up. We're going to do a ceremonial pinning. But we wanted to stay six feet apart, so we'll just be handing it to you. So we'll go down for a second and take a few pictures. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to keep everything moving and just, we're going to keep, we're going to keep everything moving. I know everybody's excited, it's an exciting day. So I think my fellow commissioners, I think this is a great day in Hamilton County. And I'm going to do a field trip over the weekend and look at all the purple buildings. So we'll move forward. We have public comments. Do we have anyone for public comments? Okay?
Carrie Davis, can you hear us?
I can hear you now. Am I allowed to speak now? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
We can't hear her.
Hello?
Okay, we hear you now, Carrie.
Okay, first off, I just want to say thank you, Jackie Panioto. You were the first voice I heard when I started in advocacy over 20 years ago. And you've always been a steady voice. I think probably the most difficult part of your job is being the front door and the first person residents speak to when they're upset, when they're crying, when they're angry. And you have always been a steady voice, always a hint of compassion, never dismissive, never anything but helpful. And I think that's extraordinary, that over 20 years of me bringing issue after issue after issue to the board and very often, starting off on your phone line, that I can't think of one time you were rude to me or condescending. And I think that is just incredible, the service you have given to the public. If you've treated others the way you treated me, well done. Well done, Ms. Panioto. Unfortunately, I have to pivot and say, give you an update on the Rules Committee for Solid Waste. I mean, I'm experiencing with them a level of secrecy and deception that I have not, I have not experienced in almost 20 years from when I first started being, serving as an advocate in the community. We've been waiting over a week to find out who is going to be on a subcommittee. And it's just incredibly secretive. Dozens and dozens of letters and emails and phone calls were made asking for more transparency on who is going to be appointed to the board.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, your compliments for Jackie kind of took you over the time. I know you have some issues that you want to discuss. You may end up, well, it's a special day. So can you, can you kind of tie it up in about a minute?
I would just frankly love for the commissioners, particularly Ms. Treehouse, since she is the chair of the committee, to please have a communication with me. I've been waiting almost three weeks for a call back from her office. But I would like to see each board member taking a vested interest in this extraordinarily important and pivotal moment in our history regarding solid waste management.
Okay. And I want to let you know, Carrie, I did get your email and I did email Mr. Johnson about the diversity issue. And hopefully, I will get something back from him very soon. Okay?
Thank you so, thank you so much for that, Ms. Dumas.
Uh huh, you're very welcome. Thank you for calling. We have another caller, Jeff Capel. Is he on the line, Jeff? Okay, very good.
I'm going to try to slide two things in. My warm-up issue is just regarding the capital budget process that's starting up at the state of Ohio again. I hope that our community will do whatever we can to make sure that the dollars that come here are going most efficiently to the people and projects that need it the most. The last couple of times, unfortunately, FC Cincinnati has received more of those capital dollars than any local community project. And we know that more stadium funding is not the number one need in our county. No elected official who has a constituency larger than Jeff Burding's office should accept something like that or even lobby for it. So really, just my request is that we work with the state to make sure that these dollars go to the places that need it the most. Then the real reason I'm here is I just wanted to say, from a taxpayer and citizen perspective, my thanks to Jackie Panioto for her 33 years of fantastic service to Hamilton County. I mean, I know, now I've never worked for the county or any of its agencies. I've just been active on issues before. And I know from that perspective, what a great job Jackie has done in every aspect of her job, especially in keeping all the information that the county holds in a very organized and easy-to-access manner. Whenever I had a public records request, if the county had the document in hand, that request probably came right back to me the same day or maybe the next day. And if it was a document the county had to chase down, I would get an email that same day usually saying, I've acknowledged your request and we're getting on it. So, you know, usually it's the commissioners that get a lot of the attention. But it, you know, it definitely has to be said that Ms. Panioto has just done a fantastic job in serving the taxpayers of Hamilton County. Congratulations on your retirement and I hope you fully enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jeff, I was wondering, you know, we have some boards and commissions that have vacancies. You sound like you're very interested in what's going on. And you may want to get on our website and see what's available. And in addition, on our budget, we will be having hearings, of course. And I'm sure you'll be there to be part of that. Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move forward on comments and motions. Commissioner, Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, just want to commend the 513 relief bus. We were in College Hill, North College Hill this week. And Mayor Tracy Nichols welcomed us and thanked us for coming. And we had a really good turnout, diverse people. We were able to, it was the first day of the booster shot that we were offering with the bus and had a really good turnout, a balance, both people who needed assistance from our jobs and family services, but also those who were getting booster. Some were getting a shot for the first time. So it was a really good turnout. And Mayor Tracy Nichols, I just want to thank her for hosting us. And she was very excited. She had invited us and I want to thank her for that. Also, we were at New Jerusalem Baptist Church in Carthage and was able to have a really good crowd there, still balance of people. We had a large line of people for the booster. So the word got out. A lot of the seniors were there to get boosters. But also, we had our constituents from our Hispanic community was there. And we're bilingual. So we were able to, they were able to understand us. We were able to understand them. And they were able to also get the shot as well. And then this Saturday, we'll be in Westwood, actually Price Hill. We'll be in Price Hill on Friday. So we'll be at Price Hill on Friday, which is tomorrow. And Saturday, October, as you've indicated, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Certainly very special to me and so many other people. My mother fought breast cancer for 12 years and passed away, unfortunately. And so every year, whether I'm in office, out of office, or wherever I am, we always certainly celebrate survivors and get information out about mammograms. And so this Saturday, I'm very happy to partner with New Prospect Baptist Church, the Lincolnware Walking Club, and the Health Gap, Closing the Health Gap. And the 513 relief bus will be there at New Prospect along with the Mammogram Jam. So they'll have a mammogram bus there. And you'll be able to, you know, get information on that. You'll be able to get all the services that we have and the shot and the free test kits. It's just going to be amazing. So come on out. You don't have to wear pink, but if you, if you have, if you have pink, wear it. And we were going to do a resolution, but I knew today we were focused on Domestic Violence Month. So, Madam President, if I can bring it next week, if you don't mind, I'd like to bring it next week for that. But for those who want to come out Saturday, this Saturday, we will be out starting at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then my last comment for the day is today, we hosted Small Business Relief Day in partnership with the Urban League. And was out there this morning and already 100 people were out there before I had to come down and come in today. But to let any small business know that they'll be there till 4:00 p.m. And it's a partnership, obviously, with the Urban League and HCDC, who is on the scene and getting applications and helping people walk through that process along with the African-American Chamber of Commerce, Ready Cincinnati, MORTER, and the Ohio Small Business Development Center. And I want to also give a special recognition to my chief of staff, Quinton Monroe, who's still out there because there were so many people. He just took off his coat and started helping people get in line and feel comfortable. But one of the things I just want to say, Madam President, Commissioner Treehouse, our board voting on an additional $4 million, recognizing that small businesses, it's not over. It's a lot of, most small businesses, particularly the ones that we've been helping and serving, they really can't afford one day closed, let alone when the whole state closed down. They're still trying to recover. They didn't have extra money. And they still, when they did open, they had to make new improvements. And so a lot of business, if you're a beauty or barber shop, if you didn't do any hair or cut any hair, you didn't get paid. But you still had bills accumulating if you wanted to keep your business going. Restaurants, if you wanted to open up again, you had to make some changes with the Plexiglas. The only people are winning at the Plexiglas, people, I guess. They're doing a great. But so a lot of those businesses that we captured to help stay open now still need an extra boost. And so they were there. And our last day to get, to apply for our grants is October the 4th. And some people had contacted our office and had some difficulty online with, because you got to realize, these are small, small businesses. They don't have a secretary or legal person to do their documented paperwork. They don't have a jackie with them to keep them in line. So, you know, it's hard to take off and do these kind of things. So when they can talk to, and I really want to thank HCDC and Urban League, when they can talk to someone and they can walk them through it, sometimes it's just one or two things they're doing incorrect that they can correct. And then their application goes in. So just was very pleased with that. And if anybody's watching, they still have to four o'clock to get there for the Small Business Relief Day. And the big thing about this day is that not only do they have our grants, but there's other monies available. GCMI was there. They could find out about other things that are available in addition to what we have available. So again, just want to thank the Urban League for hosting us and CEO Eddie Cohen and Cinnamon Pelley, the COO or organizers, and Wanda, who's with the, our Small Business Development Center, and then all the partners, including HCDC and others who are out there right now in the heat, taking these applications. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Hispanic population, who are we using to translate for them? Are we using a company?
Actually, Madam President, that's a good question. We might want to look at a company. I think we had some nurses, or one nurse that happened to be bilingual. I speak Spanish, took Spanish as first grade. I'm a little rusty, but I was able to communicate on the basic level for them. We do have our signage in two languages. But that may be a good thing to bring up. I think two things to bring up that I've seen, three things with the bus that could be improvements. And I know Jeff's working on it, is, one is, like you said, if we had someone that really is an interpreter that's there because we are getting more folks from the Hispanic community coming up. Second is someone to help set up now the Health Collaborative that's working with the Health Department. They have a van and someone comes and they set up and then they tear down. Ours, we have our employees trying to lug a table. And, you know, we're, we're out there setting up. So we want to get, we have money to do it. But to get someone just like they have that could set up. And that way, our employees can focus on getting applications. And then the third thing that we need help on is we're doing great on the intake. but we don't have a specific, once you take all these people in, 200, 300 people, what have you, when you come back to the office, we need someone on the back end that's just responsible for getting back with the bus people because we have other things that are coming in on the other side. So I know those are things that Jeff will probably be bringing to us. We have already allocated the money. We've allocated almost $5 million for the bus operations over four years. So we have the money, but we need to get someone hired to set up, someone to interpret, like you said, and maybe, might need somebody to also understand sign language because people may show up. So those are some very good, that's a very good point that you brought up and we're learning some of these things as we are out there. And I do want to give a big shout out to the team of folks who are out there every day in the hot sun and helping people from Jobs and Family Services, our Health Department, as well as Ayesha, our Engagement Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I've just got a few things. The first one, I've been talking to the Administrator about coming in for a staff meeting conversation related to the solid waste issue. So I'm the representative to the Solid Waste District, you know, put, put there by the board. And so we are, as has been indicated by the caller, Carrie Davis, we are creating a subcommittee to look at rules and look at, you know, what our authority is related to landfills and other things throughout the county. And so that process has started. It is not only subcommittee members, but there are others that will inform the decisions and some, some experts like Public Health, for instance, the Engineers Office is going to be there. And so I think it might be helpful to have an update in front of the board as to what we're doing because it's related to the landfill issue out on the west side. And so I'm, I'll touch base with your staff, Madam President, make sure we've got something on the books because we have been in regular conversations. My understanding is with Carrie Davis and others related to that. And so I think it's risen to the level now that we'll maybe have a staff meeting so I can bring, bring everybody up to date, bring Michelle Balls in so she can describe the process for everybody. Also, Madam President, you and I were both out at the Emergency Management Agency's Preparedness Event that Nick Crossley and Ryan and his team do such a nice job with. They had more people than I've ever seen out at that event. And it is to bring all the communities together throughout Hamilton County to talk about preparedness, whether it's a weather event, whether it's a pandemic, whether it's, you know, any kind of emergency situation to make sure that this community collectively is ready and prepared and these communities are individually prepared. And so Nick, you know, gives them things to think about and they exchange information. So I was really, really pleased to go out there and thank those that were in attendance for participating in partnership with us. And also, the event happened in Columbus last Friday. NACO has a Professional Development Academy and Hamilton County won the Award of Excellence. We are one of three counties that received that award and it was an award for our recognition of the importance of professional development. And so Jeff was there, Frank Spatara was there, and it was a nice recognition. I, I think when we're recognized at the national level, it's really something to celebrate. So I wanted to congratulate Jeff and Frank again for that award. And then lastly, I have a by leave, but I don't know if you want me to bring it forward now or wait till that portion of the meeting?
If we could please wait, that would be good. Yeah, but you bring up a great point. That's major with the national recognition for Hamilton County and we've been recognized many times in the last couple of years, but that is just awesome, the hard work that is being done. And so Commissioner Dreehouse mentioned about the emergency preparedness and it was a four-hour training and they made it so interesting, so exciting. And so I learned a lot and I got to collaborate with people at our table. They made sure that we were not with people that we work with, so learned a whole lot from fire and police. So it was just a great training. That's all I would have, other than you can't see it on the camera, but our 513 relief card that we had asked about being able to pass out in the community because we're telling people about all of this money that we have from the federal funding and a lot of people don't know. So when you're in the drugstore or the grocery store, whatever, you can just pass it out and just ask, "Do you know anybody who needs help?" So we also asked about putting Spanish on the back. And so I haven't heard anything yet about, do you know, Jeff, where we are on that?
I'm not certain. Commissioner, we'll find out.
Okay, so, so anyone who's listening, we'll make sure we meet your needs as we do as we were talking about the bus. So, but they're going like wildfire. I mean, people are really interested in, and the ones that I have given the cards to, they had no idea what was going on because they're living their life, basically. So, so that's all that I have. So Jeff Aludor, our Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of comments and then one by leave that, that I have. First comment is, and the board is aware of most of these things, but just for public consumption, as we are moving through the process of refinancing our sales tax bonds, notified the board that we received an upgrade in our sales tax bond rating from Moody's from May 1 to AA3, which is indicative of the, the board's financial stewardship of that fund over the years, as well as the professional manner in which that fund has been managed. I did want to thank our Budget Office, wanted to thank John Brugan, Rob Wagner, the folks who are most day-to-day dealing with that fund was definitely good news.
That's major, Jeff. I mean, you, you kind of said it fast, but you know, with the economic climate and for us to get that upgrade financially and for the people to hear how you guys have been working in finance and as an administrator to get us to that level is just really outstanding.
Yeah, well, thank you, Madam President. And just a bit more on that, that, you know, for someone maybe who's watching at home and, you know, hearing about a bond upgrade, what does that mean? You think of it as your credit rating, right? So the better your credit rating, when you go out to borrow money or refinance, you get a lower rate. That's going to mean less debt service. So less stress on the finances of the county. So that definitely does translate directly to making us be able to balance our, our budget and balance competing priorities more effectively. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Secondly, Vice President Reese mentioned about the deadline for the small business grants. I did want to let folks know that to the degree they have questions about how to apply, Commissioner Reese mentioned HCDC and some of the events that we have where we have people that actually help you with that. Also, just wanted to mention again that they can contact our Small Business Assist channel, so they can call the number directly 273-0503. Again, that's 273-0503 to reach somebody who can help them with our, with our grants. We've received a few calls from folks who have acknowledged that our grant process is more streamlined and efficient than it has been and in some of our past efforts, but these are still government grants, right? So there's a lot of people who never have to deal with these and, and just getting online to access them in and of itself can be a confusing process. So the more we can do to help people apply for those, the better off we'll be. Also wanted to mention, coming up, we have a household hazardous waste collection event on October, Saturday, October 23rd, but that is a registration event. So folks who want to go to our, it's actually a news item on the front page of our website at HamiltonCountyOhio.gov, you can register by October 22nd to participate in that event that runs on Octo, on Saturday, October 23rd. This is a really great way for people to clean out their cabinets, get rid of chemicals that may be in their basement, that may be poison hazards to children or pets, and just otherwise make sure that we're disposing of waste in a way that doesn't contaminate the landfills and waterways, et cetera. So thanks to Michelle Balls and her team out at Solid Waste for pulling that together. And finally, just wanted to recognize that tonight's a big night down on the riverfront and we certainly are wishing good things to the Bengals in their game tonight, but also more importantly, from the county's perspective, just wanted to thank our stadium parking personnel who are going to be on point tonight, making sure things run efficiently and effectively, most, in particular, Joe Feldcamp. But I believe tonight Jim Morgan is down there running point on the operations. I just wanted to thank both of them for their, for their hard work. And finally, we do have one by leave item that's in front of, I'm sorry.
Can I just interject? For Joe Feldcamp, Facilities has been awesome relating to everyone as it relates to paint Hamilton County purple and he's been connecting with all the entities and I would be remiss if I did not thank him for that. And in addition, when we talk about the launching of a small business, I think we talked to administration, the board did, about when we launched it, that maybe people needed a little bit more time to apply because, and it takes a while to even hear that it's out there. And so we extended the time a little longer for the people that are looking for small businesses. And it's the little things that, that mean so much. As a board, we said, "Wait a minute." And so Jeff just immediately took his staff and we extended the time that people have to apply. And so it's just really important that people, once we do it, that people know it and then they can mobilize themselves to be a part of. So I thank you, Jeff, and your staff.
No, thank you, Madam President. And in fact, allowing me to take that quick breather also allowed me to learn from staff that the 513 relief card revisions are ready. They're being picked up today. So...
Fantastic, okay.
Some news on that. And as it relates to the by leave resolution, this is actually by leave number two. I'm happy to go to it now unless you wanted to, okay. This is a resolution approving the report of the Fact Finder and State Employment Relations Board Case Number 2020 MED 060664 regarding building managers and senior building managers in the County Facilities Department. I believe, Frank Spatara is here. Frank, I believe the union has approved the Fact Finder's report also as of yesterday, correct? Okay, thank you, Frank. So I place that before the board with the recommendation for approval from the administration.
Thank you so much. Open it up for discussion, Vice President Reese. Commissioner Dreehouse?
No, just good, good work on getting this finished out.
So from the chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank, for your hard work too, and Gary. Commissioner Dreehouse, if...
Say nothing further.
Would you like to do your by leave?
So I will introduce by leave number one. This is the same resolution we had in front of us with a couple of changes last week. And so I'm not going to go into great detail because we've already had a lot of discussion about the resolution. But there have been a couple of changes. Some of the additional language that was added last week has been moved up in the resolution and we've also changed the title. And so with your deference, I'm going to read the title and ask for, or rather, let me make a motion to approve of the resolution supporting local efforts to resettle Afghan refugees, declaring Hamilton County as a welcoming county and expressing grave concern about the treatment of Haitians arriving at the southern border.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can we also, not, maybe not today, but just put on the record, there was a request to get some information put on the water bills and I think we were looking into that. I don't know if Jeff has that today, but if not today, maybe next week. There, we got a couple of calls from our office trying to find out if we have information. I guess it was, I don't know.
It's the cap for the customer assistance program.
And just if, we don't have to have it today, but just want to put on the calendar, maybe tomorrow. I mean, not tomorrow, but next week, they can at least get an update if you don't have it already today.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, I believe I have received an update on that from Director Christie at MSD. But as opposed to potentially misstating something, I'll go back and find that and forward it onto the board.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Dreehouse's office for her patience and also her flexibility in this resolution. So I thank you. So we'll move forward. Under the regular agenda, we have an Engineers item.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate your time. I'm Todd Long with the Chief Deputy for the County Engineers Office. If you permit me, I would like to first start with a big thank you to Declan Panettoto for all of the years of service on behalf of Eric Beck, our engineer, and our previous engineers for, really one of the things that I like to underscore if I could just briefly was the partnership and collaboration that you've, that you've given this office with the Commission and the Clerk over the years. It's just been instrumental for the work that we've done. Many, many property issues over the years, annexations, vacations, dedications, numerous type projects that take a lot of collaboration and your, your work has just been superior. And I'm personally going to miss you very much. So thank you very, very much for your work.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, well, the first item and I think the only item that we have today is a resolution accepting and recording a new deed and legal description for a consolidated portal in Hamilton County for the Coroner's Office at 4477 Carver Woods. What this document does is it's one of the final steps when property has to be combined and it allows for the property to, to essentially get a new legal description and a new deed so that property can be transferred if it needs to be by the board and has full standing. And that's the item that we have today. I can certainly take questions if there are any.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number one from the engineer.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our consent agenda. Items two is a resolution authorizing a, authorizing a contract with the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of the Sheriff Office for Prisoner Transportation Services for $350,000. And then we have item number three, which is also a resolution. And our President is back. You want to, I just, I'm just telling about what's on the consent.
So we already voted on that? Okay, I didn't know I was gone that long, but anyway, need to keep, see the shares real quick.
You want to keep it moving.
But I also would like to be on record for the engineer.
So can we do a motion to reconsider the vote?
Motion to reconsider, item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Now you're going to do your motion to, hold on one second. I'm going to zoom around in here. Sorry.
Okay, but anyway, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Under Consent Agenda items, we have 12 items and so I will make a motion once I see if there's any concerns about items two through 12, or actually it's 13. One is to receive for the record. Any comments as it relates to our consent agenda items?
No comments.
No? So I'd like to make a motion to adopt items two through 12. Is there a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
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 Thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record item 13.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Is there any further business to come before the Commission? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.